According to the National Geographic, ocean plastic is estimated to kill millions of marine animals and seabirds every year, and scientists predict that by 2050, plastic will outweigh the number of fish in the entire ocean. Plastics often break down into smaller and smaller particles called microplastics, which can be ingested by both animals and people and remain in our environment for hundreds of years or longer. Here are a few helpful tips on how you can help stop the tide on plastic pollution. Tip one: Bring reusable bags when grocery shopping. Tip two: Avoid using plastic straws or use reusable straws when having a drink. Tip three: Drink from a reusable water bottle instead of buying individual bottles. Tip four: Tell your friends and family about the effects of single-use plastics. You can help reduce the amount of single-use plastics by spreading the word and going green. For more information and to take the pledge, visit reducereuseTampaBay.org.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Board of County Commission meeting on March 10th. It's actually a workshop regarding our transportation needs. And with that, I'd like to call the meeting to order, and we'll do a roll call for those that are participating in the meeting at the board level, but also to ask those that are participating in the meeting to indicate that they're present.
Good afternoon. Oberman?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
Hagan?
Here.
Kemp?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
White?
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Today's meeting is a virtual meeting. We have many presentations. And with that, I will introduce our county administrator, Bonnie Wise. Bonnie?
Thank you. And I very much appreciate you all being here for another transportation workshop. As the board knows, during the past year, we at the county have had three transportation workshops. The first one focused on our CIP and funding sources. We had another that focused on asset preservation and the condition of our assets. And the third one discussed building and improving the system with a focus on congestion, relief, and safety. And John Lyons will briefly review some of that material again with you today. In addition to these workshops, we recently held five transportation town hall meetings located throughout the county. And I'd like to thank you for your attendance at those meetings, and would especially like to thank the over 250 citizens who took the time to attend, listen, provide feedback, and share their concerns with us. I want you to know, and I want the citizens to know, that each and every comment that they provided is valued and appreciated, and helps us better understand the needs of the community. And I'd like to recognize our staff and the staff of our partners who participated in these meetings. They prepared materials, they ensured that the public was aware of the events, staffed them, provided and collected valuable information at all the events, and their hard work is recognized and appreciated. Today, we have the opportunity to hear not only from our own Hillsborough County staff, but also from our transportation partners. We have the three cities, Tampa, Plant City, and Temple Terrace. They're going to present their information about their needs to serve their communities. Hart will then provide information about their extensive needs, and the TPO will help provide an overall perspective. And you'll hear some of our partners' needs are similar, some slightly different, but whether in the unincorporated area of the county or in the cities, there's a need to invest in the maintenance of the roads and sidewalks, improve safety for pedestrians, bicycles, and vehicles, and to provide mobility options, including sidewalks, trails, and improved transit. And this is to accommodate not only our existing growth that has occurred, but our growing population. So we appreciate everybody being here today, all of our partners being here today, because we all play a vital role in the county's overall transportation system. And then finally, you're going to hear from Sam Hamilton with the county attorney's office. He's going to discuss the transportation surtax ordinance worksheet that was provided, and he'll review certain factors that need to be considered for decision-making. I realize we have a lot of presentations today, so unless you have any more, any questions for me at this time, I would recommend you begin with the first presentation by John Lyons, Assistant County Administrator for Hillsborough County.
Thank you, Ms. Wise. Mr. Lyons, you are recognized.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Lyons, Assistant County Administrator. If you could bring up the slideshow, please. Thank you. So Commissioners, I'm going to provide a brief summary, an overview of what we've talked about for the last, well, several years, but what we focused on in the last year through several workshops. You know, we have a great need to invest in our transportation system. We need to maintain our existing infrastructure that includes over 7,000 miles of road, centerline lane miles of road, 3,200 miles of sidewalk, 275 bridges, 446 traffic signals, and 3,300 intersections. We also want to improve safety across all modes and to achieve Vision Zero at intersections from pedestrians and bicycles, focus on schools, high-crash corridors, and countermeasures to reduce speeding and other severity of crashes. We want to provide mobility options and congestion relief. We want to expand the network of sidewalks, multi-use paths, and trails. We want to enhance corridors with complete street features. We want to reduce congestion through intersection improvements and add network capacity. We also want to implement technology improvements to build and maintain a smart traffic network, which will support emergency and incident response. It'll help our transit system move quicker through the system, and it'll improve the traffic flow for all of our citizens. We've conducted those three workshops that Bonnie had mentioned. The first one, we spoke of our capital program and some of the inadequate revenues and funding shortfalls that we have. We next focused on preserving the system, and that's really taking care of what we have, and that's actually a board policy as well, to set that as a priority. The needs have been identified through inspection, data analytics, and customer service requests. Many of the calls and emails that your offices and the public works staff receive are related to maintenance needs that the public sees, such as surface condition of the roads, cracks, ruts, potholes, as well as broken sidewalks. We spoke of, we need an annual program of about $70 million a year to catch up on the deferred maintenance of the major transportation components, resurfacing, sidewalk repairs, bridge maintenance and replacement, and traffic signals. The future CIP only provides about $6 million a year in revenue to support this, so we have a significant shortfall. And at this funding level, the condition of the entire system will deteriorate at increasing rate. Customer service requests will obviously increase a lot. In the final workshop, we discussed building and improving the system with a focus on safety, congestion relief, and mobility options. The priority of making our system safer, continuing to implement Vision Zero, improve intersections to reduce and eliminate crashes and the severity of those, make corridors safer for pedestrians and bicyclists, and improve walking routes to schools in the unincorporated county. We need to catch up and provide mobility options by expanding the sidewalk, multi-use path, and trail networks. We want to continue to work with Hart to improve access to transit feasible. The significant investment will be needed to implement these and achieve the goals. At your direction, as Bonnie mentioned, in the last 30 days, we conducted five transportation open houses attended by over 250 citizens. We've provided some of the preliminary information with the agenda today, and we're working on a little bit more detailed data analysis that we'll provide at the October, excuse me, the March 23rd DCC meeting. Next slide, please. So when we looked at this back in May, we talked about preserving the system and the investments needed for paving, and this is really a more detailed breakdown of that. We need to spend about $12 million a year on bridges, about $10 million a year on sidewalk repairs. We have sidewalk backlog requests to go back as much as 10 years ago, so there's a great need of doing that. We have a significant amount of roadway pavement. We have 7,200 lane miles in the system, and we want to achieve a once every 20 years repaving effort. And we know that within a potential surtax that in a 30-year period, in 20 years, we'll start the system, we'll start that repaving effort all over again. There's 446 traffic signals and other devices such as beacons around school zones and crosswalks. We need to make sure that we're replacing some of the older poles to meet higher wind lows, more sustainability-type effort to do that, signal heads and control components. Next slide, please. When we talk about building and improving the system, we're looking at engineering, intersection improvements, and engineering and safety analysis has been conducted, and it's an ongoing process that looks at crash history and congestion data. We've identified specifically 70 locations where significant improvements would be made within the first 10 years. These would include turn lanes, median access, medians for access management, new signals and ped bike facilities in some cases. Additionally, there are projects to start supporting the smart traffic network to enhance signal operation, timing and coordination, coordination with incident response, speed management, workforce and safety, transit and emergency vehicle prioritization and preemption. We want to create new pedestrian and bicycle facilities. We need to fill in sidewalk gaps. We need to extend sidewalks. We need to do more work around schools to make those school zones more visible for those students and parents that walk, walk the kids into school on a daily basis. We've worked with the TPO on school safety study projects, and we've identified a number of those by looking at walkability, school demographics, equity in the number of students that are actually walking to school. We've identified 52 candidate schools for improvements, which could include pavement markings, new crosswalks, the beacons, and additional street lighting, and also looking at coordinating with Hart on transit stops as well. On trails, we factored in here the build-out of the 1995 Greenways Master Plan. It's a big number, but it's a big system as well. We're really focused on trying to build out that, create connectivity with municipalities, tie into multipass on DOT corridors, and really provide an alternative sustainable mobility option for the county. For complete streets and road widening, we're looking at enhancements in various quarters, the high-crash quarters and congestion quarters, which could include, including some bicycle pedestrian facilities such as bike lanes, accommodations for transit, more turn lanes, some of the safety lighting would be applied to that. We've identified 25 of those quarters in conjunction with the TPO in trying to identify some of those safety improvements. Next slide, please. So this is a summary slide. So over the last several months, we've presented information about the condition of our major asset groups, sidewalks, bridges, traffic signals, and roadway pavement condition. We've discussed the need to improve safety for all users through ongoing implementation of Vision Zero, the need to relieve congestion, the need to provide other mobility opportunities by constructing sidewalks, adding street lighting, accommodating bicycles on existing roads where appropriate, extending and connecting the trail network and multi-use paths, continue to work with Hart to provide transit access on county roads. This is a very large county, and we have responsibility for a big mobility network. We continually work with all of our partners, the city of Tampa, Plant City, Temple Terrace, Hart, the TPO, and FDOT, to coordinate and make improvements for all users of the network. So in summary, over the next 30 years, as we project out those maintenance needs, other type of safety improvements, we come up with a program that's about $4.25 billion. Our revenues are shown on here. We're projecting out fuel taxes and mobility fees to support that, and we have an unmet need of about $3.38 billion without a dedicated funding source. And that is the conclusion of my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. I truly appreciate that presentation. It helps us understand what we're budgeting, where our revenues are coming from currently, and what our long-term needs are, and broken down into the various different categories. That was very helpful. Unless there's questions, and I don't see any, the next presentation is offered by the city of Tampa. Vic B. Day is the Director of Mobility Department, and Vic, welcome, and looking forward to your presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Oberman. Can you all hear me well?
Yes, we can hear you. Can't see you anymore.
And good afternoon, Commissioners and Hillsborough County residents. I'm Vic B. Day, Director of the Mobility Department with the city of Tampa. If you could bring up the slides, Scott?
Standby, sir.
And I'd like to reflect everything that Mr. Lyons just mentioned in terms of the needs from a system preservation standpoint and a growth standpoint. I will be providing campus perspective and our need. Next slide. So when Mayor Castor came in, she identified five critical needs, and that's become part of our core strategy. It's called Transforming Campus Tomorrow. It identifies these five needs in the context of our current and future challenges, and transportation is at the top of this need. Both the public as well as the private sector have identified transportation as a critical need and a deficiency in this region, but so is smarter development, workforce development, getting smarter from within, housing affordability and attainability, which is very related to transportation, and we're going to talk about that in a second, and then the lens through which we view all of our challenges, and that's sustainability and resilience. As part of transportation, we convened a committee of community leaders, and we had a number of recommendations that came about that included adopting Vision Zero that we have, connect neighborhoods better, and foster transit as we grow rapidly. Next slide, please. So from a mobility perspective, we've kicked off what we call Tampa Moves. It is our third-year vision and our mobility plan for the city. We started by listening to the community and held virtual sessions through the pandemic in every neighborhood in Tampa. And by far and by large, we heard from about 80% of our community members, and they would prefer to walk, bike, or use transit instead of a personal vehicle. This isn't possible today because we have incomplete networks of sidewalks and bike lanes, so that is certainly a need. Next slide. But there's another element that's playing into this, and that is transportation in Hillsborough County and transportation in Tampa is expensive. As a proportion of the household budget, it's almost a quarter in our region when you look at the Housing and Transportation Affordability Index by the Center for Neighborhood Technology. It's a very reliable source, and this is a high proportion. So when we talk about house costs and housing costs, we can't look at it just by itself. We have to look at what the second highest cost is, and that is transportation. And the reason this is important is because as we move further away from job centers, that transportation cost rises primarily because we're car-centric. This cost is also not very easily perceivable because it's completely unbundled, so car payments, parking, maintenance, gas, and insurance are all separate. Next slide, please. So we keep this in mind as we plan our growth, not to mention that the streets in Tampa are very unsafe. While we average 44 fatalities a year, last year we had 81 fatalities. And again, this is a function of slightly lesser congestion, higher speeds, and a lot of other things through the pandemic that go in, but this is a problem that the entire region has committed to solve, and there are various ways to get about that. Next slide, please. So we know that our region is growing. Tampa certainly is growing rapidly. Hillsborough County even more so when it comes to residents. In this region on your slide, between the airport and Ebor City, that is the urban core of Tampa. And between here and the university area, we anticipate 250 new jobs over the next 20 years, 250,000 new jobs, I'm sorry, over the next 20 years. And only about 20% of those jobs will be occupied by Tampa residents, meaning there will be a lot of regional trips that come in from unincorporated Hillsborough County, Pasco County, and Canelas County to access this urban core. We cannot accommodate that type of growth with a single mode of travel or car-centric infrastructure only. Car-centric infrastructure means we would need larger intersections, wider roads, which create conditions for speeding, which creates other issues with sustainability and resilience, and more impervious surfaces. Rather, we're working towards planning for more density within this urban core and the neighborhoods around it. We're planning to foster more transit and walk-bike network, primarily because transit is elastic, unlike car-based infrastructure, where transit can expand service during the peak and then reduce it during the off-peak as needed, something that we cannot achieve with other modes. Also, transit paired with walk-bike network, improve health outcomes, sustainability and resilience, and in many ways, if you look at what we're planning towards, it's really looking to our future by learning from our past. Free 1960s, this is the type of service and this is the type of network we had, and we can certainly go back to it. And studies have shown that this is beneficial for the environment. It's better for health, diabetes, obesity, and other health outcomes are lesser in walkable and bikeable networks. Furthermore, as we grow and as we accommodate all of these jobs, transit will also facilitate that growth and allow us to scale over the years, not requiring huge investments right upfront. Next slide, please. And there's another major benefit to the entire region, particularly unincorporated Hillsborough County and Canelas and Pasco Counties. If we are able to reduce vehicular congestion within the urban core, it reduces overall congestion for other users as well, irrespective of the mode they choose. And we saw this through the pandemic. So initially, traffic dropped off sharply around March of 2020, and then it picked back up, almost up to 90% of original traffic or 2019 traffic for almost a year, and we still didn't have significant congestion problems. And that was because most of those trips were commuter trips during the peak, and it's the peaks that really influenced our infrastructure in a car-based system. So we feel what we do with additional densities, what we do with planning strategies in our urban core, like unbundling parking, which also adds to impervious surfaces from development, and encouraging transit and housing, things like TOD studies that Hart is already working on, that the TPO is already working on, along with a slew of other planning strategies that include parking, zoning reform, bringing in the missing middle housing, where we consider the median wage and what's attainable for them, and serving these areas with transit and walk-bike is going to be a benefit for the entire region. Next slide, please. People don't like being stuck in traffic, and our traffic is pretty bad. Just this year's survey for 2021, we're right behind Atlanta. We're right behind Atlanta. I mean, we're already stuck in traffic and congestion gets worse, and we know that we cannot grow our way out of congestion by widening our roads because that only increases congestion. We also know that car-centric transportation costs are really high, so if we want to retain the soul of our region and avoid displacement, it's not going to help for people to be displaced further and further if their transportation costs go up in proportion to their housing costs coming down. That's a lose-lose situation. That's where we need to foster multimodal infrastructure as well. Next slide, please. So this is the typical conundrum that we've had in the past. We know that for thriving communities or economic development, we need two critical things. One is workforce housing, or rather attainable housing, and the other is access to jobs. That access to jobs historically has only been through one type of mode, and to really expand it to make more livable streets and to make transit more accessible, we need to look at parking policies as I touched upon. But it's a combination of all of these solutions that are really going to get us there, especially as we look towards the future and our challenges with sustainability. Next slide. Next slide? Oh, thank you. Uh... And we know what to do. I mean, we've developed a resilient Tampa plan that considers all of these challenges together. It's a multidisciplinary world, and we need to look at it from that perspective. We've developed a Vision Zero Action Plan that we'll be unveiling next week to address the significant increase in fatalities and the challenges that we face with that. Our challenge, of course, is funding. Next slide, please. So where we ultimately want to go is from roadways like these that require resurfacing and regular maintenance. And we know that these roadways exist all over the county. Next slide. To a place where we have enough resources to improve our facilities. Next slide. The same goes for walkability. But in general, our annual maintenance needs are about eight times more than our current funding when it comes to resurfacing, when it comes to our roadways, when it comes to maintaining our 45 bridges, three pedestrian bridges. And this is a big challenge because our roadway surface is the number-one complaint in the city. Our budget for it is significantly lower than our need. And we know that we are currently in a pavement condition that is rapidly degrading over time. It takes lesser time to go from fair to poor condition of a roadway than it does from good to fair. And we're in that fair-to-poor zone right now. Next slide, please. Walkability is a big challenge, but walkability is also an opportunity. Walkable neighborhoods have higher property values. They have lower health issues. They have environmental benefits. And plus, we need to have proper sidewalks. Next slide. For both our children to walk to school, but also seniors when we consider aging in place. Next slide. When we consider aging in place, when we consider avoiding displacement, walkability really enhances quality of life. Planning for services closer within your neighborhood also helps. This will allow our older population to walk around, meet neighbors, access services that are nearby without being car-dependent. Next slide, please. We also know that we need to transform our streets and our spaces and distribute the space and right-size them. Next slide. To revitalize the same spaces for the neighborhood and improve access to local businesses and pedestrians. This is an example of Columbus Avenue project that's currently ongoing. Next slide, please. Our annual multimodal needs are significant. Again, we walk through the benefits of walking and biking, but our budget currently is significantly short of our needs, which is about 18 million. And this includes safe routes to school programs. This includes building out our bike network, and not just for bicycles, but micro-mobility as well. A recent review of 170 different studies demonstrated health and mobility benefits of walkable and bikeable neighborhoods by the University of Toronto. And of course, streetlights. We know that half of our pedestrian fatalities happen at night during the dark, and we need to mitigate for that as well. Next slide, please. The same goes for congestion relief. John mentioned this, smarter traffic signal systems, connected vehicle technologies, aggregating different mobility options. So not just providing for first-mile-last-mile services, transit, and other services, but aggregating them so that we can get more out of them. This need is about seven times lesser than what our current budget is also. Add to that improving intersections because that's where really a majority of the congestion is. It's usually not in midstream of a roadway or in a segment. It's at the nose. Next slide. Next slide, please. And finally, I will close with this, that we recommend similar allocations as we did in 2018. This surtax was a good idea in 2018. It's a good idea for now. And whether we're looking at the environment, or Vision Zero, or quality of life, or a wide range of issues that impact us every day, we need this funding, and we look forward to your and the community's support on this thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vic, that was excellent. That was the city of Tampa. Next on the agenda is the city of Plant City. And with that, we're looking to hear from Frank. Frank, are you there?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Commissioners. We're happy to participate in this workshop. I'm going to share my screen and walk you through a brief presentation of the city's... It's not sharing yet. There it is. The city's current five-year transportation capital improvement program and a expected 10-year program. The city of Plant City has largely the same types of issues that Hillsborough County and the city of Tampa have, just not to the same extent. Our current five-year budget is approximately $30 million. The vast majority of that comes from general revenue funds and the one-mil, including the one-mil transportation-oriented tax that was implemented in the city in 2017. And we also have some degree of DOT grants and CDB grants covering our projects. But with that, of the $30 million five-year budget, roughly $5 million of that does not have funding sources identified. To give you a quick overview of the types of projects we have in this project, in the program, we've got about $17 million of street resurfacing, some complete street projects, and the typical R&amp;R-type projects that everybody else is seeing, and some advanced traffic management improvements. To break them down into the categories everybody's looking at, roughly 2/3 of our budget, our transportation budget, is going to keep the assets in a state of good repair. We have about $5 million aimed at safety improvements, Vision Zero-type improvements, and about $3.5 million oriented towards improving economic growth. But of that, there's still significant portions that are not funded in that five-year budget. The street resurfacing program is going well in Plant City. We've roughly got a little over 50% of the miles resurfaced in the last seven years, and we're on target for a 15-year renewal cycle. Now, looking at the broader scale of 10 years, we've got a number of, pretty much all of these projects you see here are identified projects. Only a few of them are conceptual, such as enhancing some of our current R&amp;R with the stormwater pipes and some of the bridge repair and some brick road restoration. And then we've got a larger sidewalk and bike path-type program that'll connect the schools and the parks, and some other improvements, the minimum bicycle grid that was recommended in the 2017 transportation plan for the city. And all of that's about a $45 million unfunded need over the next 10 years. Those needs fall into these general categories. A small portion of it continues to repair the streets and the assets. Vision Zero gets a large chunk of it, trying to make some considerable safety improvements. Real Choices, a number, a good bit of those projects go to trails and sidewalk improvements, and then economic growth would get a boost out of that also. Looking at the total budget, which is the current five-year budget and the assumption that the ensuing five-year budget would be similar and the 10-year unfunded needs on top of that, we're looking at roughly 50% of the transportation budget would be going to keeping the assets in good repair, 22% towards the safety-oriented Vision Zero projects, 10% towards Real Choices, real alternatives to automobiles and economic growth and congestion improvements, the smart cities improvements, bringing up the remainder. So that's our program in a nutshell. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. I think we're going to reserve questions for each of the groups towards the end, and everyone a chance to speak, and then we'll discuss what we need to discuss and help work through these issues. But thank you very much for your presentation. Our next presentation is by the city of Temple Terrace, and Mayor Andrew Ross. You're recognized.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good to see you, everybody. Thank you for allowing us to participate. I'd like to quickly introduce our team. I have with us our interim city manager, Dr. Steve Spina, and our public utilities director, Troy Tench, and our city engineer, Brian McCarthy. So Commissioner, our needs are somewhat different than some of the others in that our most pressing needs are actually projects that technically belong to others, such as the state and to Hillsborough County. Our most pressing need is the Vision Zero project along Bullard Parkway, which is a county road. And so our interests certainly overlap here with the county. So although this is on the county's list of projects, it is of huge impact to our city. So that's probably one of our most pressing needs. Our other needs primarily concern Vision Zero and Real Choices projects. We are on about a 25-year cycle for retaining, repaving our streets, maintaining good repair. Probably able to keep mostly on track with that, with our current funding. But where we're falling short are on Vision Zero projects and Real Choices projects. And many of these projects, in fact, most of them, involve enhancing, improving sidewalk construction, sidewalk maintenance, and the construction of bicycle, multimodal connectivity to some of the other projects that connect us better to Tampa, to USF, to Uptown, and to the region in order to reduce traffic altogether. And as the presenter from Tampa said, a lot of people would rather bike or walk, and they're in close enough proximity to do so. We just don't have adequate sidewalks and bike paths to make that option safe. And so those efforts are underway, as you know, on Fowler Avenue, which is a state road, and 56th Street, which is a state road. But we do not, the county does not have funding right now for those projects along Bullard. And we don't have sufficient funding within the city, on the city streets, to connect these paths and sidewalks once they're constructed. So we have a deficit, and I've sent a spreadsheet. We're probably about $8 million short in where we would like to be in sidewalks and bicycle path construction. We could always use a little acceleration on our state of good repair, as everybody else could too. But that's not where we're critically short right now. It's mostly in Vision Zero and Real Choices. And again, I'd just like to reiterate that probably our highest priority right now is actually a county project, and that is Bullard Parkway. Thank you, Commissioner.
You're muted, Commissioner? Sorry. That's, these presentations have really helped us understand how our cities and our counties' needs are different, and yet all are unfunded in so many ways. So it's good to see that we're all focusing on what each of our communities that actually work together as our residents move from one area to another. But our projects and planning are different, and that's important when we're looking at our overall funding strategy. The next presentation is from our transit agency, HART. And with us today, we have our CEO, Adelé Legrand. Ms. Legrand, you're recognized.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to be here today and to present our information for HART. I'm going to try to share, or I believe my deck was already sent, but I'll try to, I can share what I have as well. So what I wanted to do is to briefly or quickly go through our presentation as far as the state of affairs for HART. But I wanted to take a moment first just to talk about the mission. And our mission here is to take people to places that enhance their lives. And that sounds super simple, because it is. You know, our number-one goal is to make sure that we have the ability to take people to the places where they want to go and get them there safely. We're also working hard to become the highest customer-ranked mobility provider in the region. And what that means is that we want to ensure that the service that we're putting out there serves that takes you where you need to go, but it's a great experience, and it's a preference that you are choosing to ride transit, not just because you have to. And how we're going to get there are to do a couple of major things, but they're basic things. One is to build a new heavy maintenance facility. If you have not had the opportunity to see our heavy maintenance facility, please reach out to me, and my staff will put together a tour for you. But it's definitely in a state of disrepair, and we need to build a new facility so that we can bring in new modern technology in our vehicles and our maintenance approaches, as well as attract new employees to the workforce and having a nice, great, state-of-the-art facility to work out of. Also is to expand service to our customers. So that means to not only provide excellent service to the customers we have now, but really expanding our service to reach further into the county and make it a reliable option for mobility choices. That ties into improving our on-time performance. So again, it's important for us to have the resources so that if our schedule says the bus is coming every 30 minutes, it's actually there on time, as well as if it's saying our schedule to come every 60 minutes, that you are assured that every 60 minutes that bus will be there and you can get to your final destination on time. And lastly, and I would say maybe more, most importantly, is to enhance our bus shelters and our new technologies. So when people are waiting to access our system, they're waiting in a safe, secure, pleasant environment. But what does that look like for us right now? So currently, and our FY '21 stats are on the screen before you, you know, again, recognizing that this entire FY '21 cycle was during a pandemic, there are a couple of things I do want to point out. Our ridership at the end of FY '21 was around 9.7 million riders. Why I want to focus on this number is because our ridership in 2019, FY '19, our total ridership was 9.7 million riders. So what does that mean? It means that even during a pandemic, we are still providing service to a large population within the county, and people are still using our service even during this, I would say, economic slowdown for public mobility. In addition to that, I do want to share with you our routes. We have 30 routes currently. When I made this presentation last year, I started here at HART last January. That time, we had 33 routes. It's not something to celebrate that our route numbers have gone down, but it's just, it's really a testament to the fact that we have limited resources. And in order to ensure that we are providing reliable service that is on time, we had to make some adjustments. So here's a reflection of some of those adjustments. We now have 30 routes, of which nine have frequencies that are less than 30 minutes, and 21 have frequencies that are 60 minutes. So that means that 2/3 of our routes, they have frequencies of buses coming once every 60 minutes. In addition to our bus service, we do provide van power transit service, so that's service for people who qualify for the power service, as well as nine streetcar vehicles. I did want to spend a little bit of time to talk about our operating expenses and revenues. And this is based on FY 2022 budget numbers. So what you'll see is we have a balanced budget, and our overall operating costs and revenues are approximately $106 million. What I do want to share with you today are a couple of numbers that were unique again because of this pandemic time. If you notice on the right-hand side of the screen where we focus on the operating revenues, you'll see the second circle is the federal operating grants, the CARISA Act. So from our budget from FY '22, you'll see approximately $16 million of those dollars are coming from CARISA funds. So as we all are aware, these are not, you know, static funds. It's a one-time opportunity, so we would lose that. so we would lose that option to have that additional $16 million in our budget. Overall, you'll see that the majority of our revenue comes from the Avalorum tax, and then it is also supplemented by federal operating grant dollars, our state operating grant dollars, and our Fairbox recovery. As you see on the left-hand side, the majority of our expenses, as in most organizations that you have operations, are attributed to salaries and wages. But then again, what you have to understand here is that if we want to put more service on the street, we have to hire more people to drive the buses, we have to hire more people to maintain the buses. So as we talk about expanding our service, that area of salary and wages will continue to grow. Next, I wanted to share a bit about our capital project expenses for FY '22. As several of the previous speakers have mentioned, you know, state of good repair and making sure that your assets are in a condition that are safe for the community is very important. So here you'll see that our rolling stock maintenance is one of our highest costs here. Rolling stock are our vehicles and the maintenance of our vehicles and our facilities as well in the second bullet. I would say that that is going to be a consistent need for us. This capital budget is really dependent on us being successful and competing on federal funds or for federal funds, as well as state funds, and really leveraging some of our local opportunities. As we think about the next 30 years and how we are preparing for expanding our service and really looking at our opportunities to keep our system up and running in a sustainable manner, we have employed a firm to help us build a financial model, a 30-year financial model. So this slide is an output from our financial model. And what we have calculated, based on all our projects in the TDP, as well as our current needs, that we have a total estimate of unconstrained operating and capital cost of approximately $17.8 billion, of which we have revenues estimated of $6.9 billion that we actually can account for over this 30-year period, which leaves us with an unfunded operating capital cost of $10.9 billion. What I'm showing here on the right side of the slide are where these dollars are needed. So if you look, starting from the top, we have several funded projects in the TDP, which represents 6% of that overall cost, and those projects are listed there. These projects are very important. Paratransit service is growing. As we look at our ridership numbers increasing, we're also seeing that there are more people who qualify for paratransit service. And it's not only age-dependent any longer. In the past, it was primarily, you know, if you have an aging population, your paratransit needs also increase. We have more younger people with, I would say, disabilities that allow them to qualify for paratransit service, as well as several people coming home from the military. So this is an area that we have to be on top of and make sure that we provide services for the paratransit system. In addition, we have a share for our TECO streetcar extension. The city made a presentation and talked about the value of extending the TECO streetcar and how it's connected to many other important initiatives across the city. In addition, I would say for me, being the transit leader, what I see is our bread and butter are the existing HART services. So that's our buses, our paratransit, our streetcar, just the bread and butter of putting service out there on the street, making sure we have a safe, clean, reliable system. And that represents 37% of those funds. And I would say the biggest bucket, almost half of what we're, what we need to move forward that's unfunded, are these initiatives over here in the very last column on the right-hand side, which is frequency improvements. And frequency improvements, that goes back to that very first slide where I shared that our frequency is around 60 minutes for two-thirds of our routes. In order to really provide reliable, dependable, competitive service, we need to flip that. Where two-thirds of our routes are less than 30 minutes, and one-third are within 60 minutes. So in order to do that, we really need more funding, and that is unfunded. Innovative solutions, that's trying out new technology, new applications, talking about mobile apps and just linking things together, that's in this bucket as well. Introducing new local and express routes, like BRT service. You know, again, nothing super, I would say, exciting, basic mobility options, but bringing more of those into our community, working and implementing and funding some capital projects for the system, as well as capital projects to improve our transit centers, and then talking about fixed highway projects like premium BRT. And it's last on this list, but again, as I stated earlier, none of this can be done without ensuring that we have a great state of good repair and ensuring that we have constant funding for this. I will end with this last slide, which is the economic impact of transit. I recognize I am the transit CEO, so of course I'm excited about transit and I'm going to advocate for it. And I also recognize that our transit mode share in the county is not very high. So several people that use transit are familiar with it, but those who do not use transit don't really understand the value that public transit brings to a community. And what I wanted to do with this slide is to share that for every $10 million in capital investment in public transportation, that yields $30 million in increased business sales. So when people are using transit and they're getting off of the vehicles and they're going to work, and then they buy a cup of coffee in the morning, or they pick up a breakfast sandwich, and then they go out for lunch, or they stay later on to take in a show, you know, that all adds to the bottom line for the county. Every $10 million in operating investments yields $32 million in increased business sales. And then traveling by public transportation, a lot of the presenters talked about Vision Zero, is 10 times safer per mile than traveling by car. And lastly, of all public transit riders, 71% are employed workers and 7% are students. So we're talking about people who are our customers, who are working in our county, who are contributing to the economic bottom line of our county, as well as those who are being educated in our county. So just wanted to share this with you to just reemphasize the value of us all continuing to work together and the value of transit in Hillsborough County. Thank you for this opportunity, and I look forward to the further discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Legrand. That was excellent. It helped us really understand some of what HART is offering as value, but also many of the challenges the agency is feeling. And that's, it's impressive that you're able to offer the service that you, that you are. But it also helps us understanding how important it is for our competitiveness, economic value of offering that investment, but also the important critical services for those with disabilities, you know, our veterans and our military personnel, as well as our young people who have, who need those real choices to get around. Thank you very much for your presentation. Our next presentation is from our transportation planning organization. Many of you may know our transportation planning organization as the Metropolitan Planning Organization. It recently changed its name. And this is the agency that actually looks at assisting all of our, all of our participants in transportation efforts, in looking at how we need to not only address our short-term, but our long-term transportation needs for the entire area, not only Hillsborough County, but for the region. And in that, the TPO has, has offered us some, basically a bird's-eye view of what our long-term transportation needs are and what that state of the system is. And with that, we're looking forward to the presentation from Beth Alden. She's the executive director of the Transportation Planning Agency. Beth?
Thank you so much, Commissioner. It's a pleasure to be here with, with you and the other Commissioners, and also with my very well-spoken and committed colleagues we work with on a regular basis at the TPO. As you very well-stated, the TPO's role is, once you put all of the pieces together that you've heard talked about by your local governments, once you put all those pieces together, what have we got? And does, are we able to meet our community's needs with that? And so we do do this kind of, you know, big-picture snapshot. We do this snapshot once every five years. So in general, if there's any differences, I'll throw some numbers out. In general, if there are ever any differences between our numbers and the local governments, it's probably because ours are two years old. You should always go with your local government, local agency numbers. So our transportation investments, one of the things that we look at...
Beth, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but could you show, change the formatting of your screen so that it shows in slide form? Is it possible?
Um, it's doing that on my end. It's not on yours?
I can take it if you want.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, you just ask him to advance, and he'll advance it for you.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
So I was just, so go ahead and advance to the next slide. Thank you. Our growth continues to be very rapid, and when we look at what our transportation needs are, of course, we need to address not only today's needs, but also future needs. As we look at that with the TPO, we're basing that on the growth plans and the comprehensive plans of the three cities and the county. Next slide. And the analysis that we do includes both a technical review, looking at demands and current conditions. It also includes a lot of public engagement on what our community's priorities are. Next slide, please. The public engagement that we did this, with our last update of the Long Range Plan, was based on a very extensive survey with more than 5,000 participants. The vast majority of them were Hillsborough County residents. The remainder were in our county for other reasons, such as business or recreation. But just in general, some of the recurring themes that we saw in the survey were people see that we're not, we're not investing enough in transit and in multimodal projects, that we really need to make, make some changes there. Next slide, please. So the next step in this process of the snapshot of where we are is looking at available funding to address the needs. We are looking at the big picture, so all of the funds that are available. You know, so as you're, as you're considering, do we need another funding source for transportation? What our role is, is to look at, well, what can we do with all of the funding that we already have? What funding do, do we have? And we turn over all of the seat cushions, and we look at what are the eligible uses of all of the funds that are available. Next slide, please. And so in working, working with your, with your staff, with the agencies, pulling together funding from Florida DOT, federal grants, we look at the local funding that's available to, to HART, even tolls that are raised by the Expressway Authority, all of those funds together. What is our, what is our big picture available? And then this is kind of a snapshot of the different uses of those funds, if you're trying to hit some, some key performance outcomes. Next slide, please. One of the things that we did in the last update of the Long Range Plan, which was adopted in 2019, was to look at our future with and without the SRTAX that was approved in 2018. So again, this is a snapshot in time. Hillsborough County voters had just approved that referendum, and so we incorporated that into the Long Range Plan, just to get, you know, again, some big-picture numbers. So without the SRTAX, a lot of the funding that we have available is going to go to the state highway system, both the interstate highways, which is what mostly comprises the strategic intermodal system of the Florida Department of Transportation, and also the state highways. So think, you know, US 92, for example, because most of the funding that we have available is state and federal. If we want to make an investment in our local system, so our county roads, our city roads, our local bus system, the SRTAX makes a big difference. It means, and you know, again, these are our numbers from a couple of years ago, but, you know, more than 50% increase in our transit funds, 84% increase in funds available for our local roads. Next slide, please. The, we've talked about, a little in the past about the buckets, why, you know, why are there buckets? Why are there buckets in the Long Range Transportation Plan? The reason really is to give you flexibility as well as accountability. So the categories in the Long Range Transportation Plan that you've heard some of the speakers reference, Real Choices, Vision Zero, those are defined in the Long Range Transportation Plan by performance measures. So are we able to make a difference with the high number of fatalities and serious injuries in our county? Are we able to be on time with our resurfacing, with our bridge repairs? Setting those performance outcomes and the types of projects that can make a difference with those performance outcomes gives each of your local governments the flexibility to choose the right project at the right time to move the needle. The referendum that was approved earlier was very similar to the Long Range Transportation Plan that was adopted back in 2014. That was our first really performance outcome-based Long Range Transportation Plan. Next slide, please. And that was true for both the transit expenditures and the roadway expenditures. So for example, performance outcomes on the transit side of the house, what percent of our people, what percent of our residents and our jobs are within walking distance of bus service? So those kinds of performance outcomes allow you to choose how to use the available. Next slide, please. The performance, so I was just mentioning, performance outcomes. The 2019 Long Range Plan proposed some new performance goals using the SRTAX that had just been approved by the voters. And I won't go through all of these. We'll talk about them a little bit as I go through the categories. Next slide, please. The types of projects in each of those categories are, we basically, we're just organizing this based on what makes a difference with each of those performance outcomes. You know, so I mentioned the Vision Zero performance measures. With the, with the congestion management program, we're looking at having more reliable travel times as, as one of our performance outcomes. So, you know, there, we're really talking about bottlenecks. Let's really, let's target the funds that we have available and zoom in on those bottlenecks, both with turn lanes at intersections and with, with advanced technology. Next slide, please. And then I'm just kind of going to scroll through some of the, each of those performance-based programs. So good repair and resilience to start out with. This is just to give you a sense of what agencies are responsible for roadway resurfacing. And, you know, as you can see, the lion's share of the lane miles that need to be resurfaced are owned by the county. So, next slide, please. When we talk about, oh, what is the pavement condition? DOT-owned roads, the DOT has been able to keep up with maintenance using the state gas tax. The state gas tax is indexed to inflation. We don't have that same situation at the local level. So when we look at the funding available to Hillsborough County for resurfacing, you get statistics like these that your staff presented earlier this year. Next slide, please. This is true also on our bridge conditions. About half of the bridges in this county are maintained by the Florida Department of Transportation. And again, they've been able to keep up with maintenance. About a third of them are maintained by Hillsborough County. And we have shortfalls in being able to keep up with our bridge maintenance for our county-owned bridges. Next slide, please. State of good repair, of course, also applies to... State of good repair, of course, also applies to our transit system. Um, HART, uh, produces a, a transit asset maintenance plan. Uh, and some of the things that, uh, come out of that plan, 41% of the vehicles not in a state of good repair right now, you know, what that means is, you know, we need to replace them on a regular basis. Um, so a, a number of vehicles have met their useful life and are, are ready for retirement. When those vehicles break down on the roads, of course, it's a problem not only for the people who are depending on those buses to get them to their jobs. Uh, it's also a problem for roadway operations. Next slide, please. Um, and then the, uh, last piece of this, uh, good repair and resilience, um, category is, is resilience. And so this is kind of a, kind of a new area that we're focusing on and trying to get a sense of what is the order of magnitude of need for investment. So what do we need, what do we mean by investing in resilience in our transportation system? Uh, we looked at the major roads that could potentially be washed out in a category three storm uh, and prioritized those, uh, working with our partners, um, based on which of those roads are the most, most critical and most vulnerable. Um, narrowing that down to 115 miles, uh, of those roads. Uh, we looked at some strategies for, uh, how do we make sure that if they do get inundated by a major storm, um, that they're still going to be usable after the end of that storm? Um, certainly this was a, a big challenge in the panhandle when, uh, when Michael came through. Uh, next slide, please. So some strategies, uh, to, uh, improve the resilience, uh, of those vulnerable roads uh, would be to i- invest in stormwater drainage systems, help, you know, bring the stormwater away from the roads. Again, you know, very ballpark numbers of what is needed if you're going to, um, really make some investments in the stormwater drainage system around that 115 miles of vulnerable, critical roads. Uh, we might need to increase our countywide, uh, funding in stormwater systems by about half. Next slide, please. Um, and then we also want to look at what is the pavement condition and the substructure, the subsurface uh, underneath that pavement. Um, if we want to, uh, harden, um, those 115 miles, um, and, uh, strengthen the shorelines where they're next to shorelines, um, we may need to nearly double our funding for, uh, road maintenance. Um, you know, so again, these are kind of new numbers. They may not necessarily, uh, be in, in your local government's capital, uh, improvement programs yet, because this is kind of a, a, a new emerging area. Next slide, please. Um, it, we, um, have done some economic impact analysis that points to, although those numbers look large, um, having the roads available, uh, after the end of the storm is really important for our economic recovery. Um, so in only two and a half weeks, not having those roads available um, causes enough economic negative impact that it would outweigh the cost of making the investments today. Next slide, please. So I'll go more rapidly through some of the other programs, um, in the, the Vision Zero area. Um, if we had more funding dedicated for safety, we could make a difference, uh, with reducing the number of deaths and, um, severe incapacitating injuries uh, on our major roads. Um, the ballpark number that we were using is, you know, it's about three times the existing level of funding for safety. Uh, it would mean saving around 70 lives per year, um, if we were in the ballpark of about 200 deaths per year. Um, the number of incapacitating injuries is of course much higher. Next slide, please. Um, it's important that we focus the available dollars on the high injury roads. Um, if we are going to be able to move the needle, uh, on those safety performance measures. Um, next slide, please. We've all been working together, your local governments and the TPO, uh, on what can we do with those high injury roads? Uh, Smart Cities, uh, the program that targets bottlenecks and improving travel time reliability. Um, the existing funding, again, mostly state and federal funding. So, um, upgrading 130 miles of roads, um, with our, our traffic management systems. With the existing funding, it'll focus primarily on the state highway system. We'll be able to improve our travel time, uh, at the end of that by about 10%. Um, with the, the previous 1% SRTAX, we could expand that to the county roads and potentially improve travel time 30%. Next slide, please. And in our real choices when not driving category, um, we're looking both at separated greenways. So these are not the walk by facilities that are integrated into roads, which are part of the Vision Zero program, making it safe for all users, but creating a separate greenway system um, would be part of the Real Choices, uh, program. Uh, and the county's done a lot of work, City of Tampa's done a lot of work. Uh, the region's done a lot of work mapping out some major trail quarters and, and ways that we can create those very safe, family friendly, um, places to, to walk and bike and go longer distances. Uh, with just a fairly modest investment, uh, we could build out a lot of that network and make the connections to Pinellas County and, uh, Pasco County that those counties have been working on for years and are way ahead of us. Next slide, please. Um, the other part of the Real Choices program is expanding the bus service. So beyond just maintaining the bus service we have now, um, can we bring that service to more people and jobs? And so with the, with the previous SRTAX, um, our, you know, ballpark number again was that we could bring nearly half of our residents and jobs near frequent service, near great service. Um, this also makes a big difference for our disadvantaged population. Um, of course, HART is currently updating its plans to make sure that those dollars are targeted, uh, to be just as effective as possible. Next slide, please. Um, the bus service, um, there's been a lot of attention on the need for improved bus service uh, over the last couple of years. Uh, the Tampa Bay Partnership engaged with the USF, Muma College of Business to look at, uh, you know, again, economic impact and particularly finding that, um, that our two biggest obstacles to prosperity in this, in this region, um, are educational attainment and, and our bus system. So just, you know, being able to provide that access to jobs and opportunities. Um, if the bus system were to be expanded per HART's plans, uh, their estimate was it would make 52% more jobs accessible, um, to residents who are likely to be job seekers. Uh, next slide, please. Um, we also, of course, are coordinating with HART on the paratransit system that Ms. Brand mentioned. Uh, another piece of that paratransit system is the county's Sunshine Line program. Um, so, uh, HART is providing door to door trips for persons with disabilities in the bus service area. Sunshine Line helps, um, with folks who aren't, uh, able to use those services. We're currently estimating the need for more than 1 million door to door trips per year for vulnerable people who can't use HART or HART Paratransit, uh, after 2045 population growth. And you contrast that with, uh, in fiscal 20, Sunshine Line was able to provide uh, about 142,000 such trips. So it's a fraction of the need that, that we estimate. Next slide, please. Um, and then, uh, finally, I'd like to talk about major investments for economic growth. Uh, and so in this category, we do list out specific projects, um, and, uh, show their relationship to our, our vital business districts across the county. So these are, um, that tend to be bigger ticker, ticket projects. Um, and, uh, include both transit and road major capacity projects. Um, there is a fair amount of state and federal funding available, you know, again, on the state highway system, on the interstate highway system, um, for a number of projects that are listed in the long range transportation plan. Um, you know, but what about the county roads? Uh, are, you know, is there funding available to help with some of those and, and complement build out the network? Uh, and so our estimate with the, with the previous SRTAX was 845 million for widening or extending county roads with projects, uh, to be determined in the future by the county. Um, next slide, please. And, um, the other piece of that puzzle, as I mentioned, was fixed guideway transit. And what do we mean by fixed guideway transit? So that's any transit, um, where you would not be moving the route to a different location. So it might be rapid bus in special lanes. It might be reusing freight rail corridors. Um, it might be, um, I, the quarter, uh, between downtown Tampa and West Shore, something where transit would not be stuck in traffic. Um, and where there's some permanence, you know, that that transit system is going to continue in that area. Um, so the, uh, previous SRTAX, um, provided, you know, some funding specifically to create this new system, a rapid transit system that doesn't get stuck in traffic. Um, next slide, please. Um, the specific projects that would be funded with that, I, we have just kind of a, a, a big picture in the long range plan of opportunities. Uh, and I think what's important is that, uh, that funding that set aside for transit in fixed guideways um, could have the potential to fund several projects and, uh, really make a start at creating a rapid transit system for our community. Um, that funding could be used to leverage federal grants and state grants uh, on a, a three to one ratio potentially. So, you know, you're bringing in $3 for every dollar that you invest. Um, those are of course competitive grants and, um, you know, how far we can get with building a rapid transit system depends a little bit on how well we do with our competition. Uh, but there's been a lot of planning and advance work, uh, done that would really help us to compete for those grants. So really the barrier to moving forward with creating a, a real rapid transit system is lack of local funding to operate and maintain that system and the lack of a local match for the construction grants, those federal and state construction grants. Uh, next slide, please. Um, and that brings me to the end of my presentation. Um, all, all of these projects would be ones that would be not implemented by my organization, but by all of the agencies that you've heard from already. And our role with this again is performance mar- mar- uh, monitoring, supporting our partners with feasibility studies, cost estimates, uh, and that kind of thing. So we're very happy to be able to contribute to that process and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Thank you, Beth Alden. I really appreciate that. It's, it helps to see not only what, what our needs are, uh, by each of the presenters, but also what we are able to accomplish when we partner with the state and the federal government. Um, one of the things that's critically important to, to recognize as well is when the, this last year, when the Biden administration was successful in negotiating with the House and the Senate on improving the investment infrastructure opportunities with the infrastructure bill. Um, within that, that plat- in that program are federal funds to help build our infrastructure, including roads, uh, you know, transit, uh, bridges. All of those are categories within the infrastructure bill at the federal level. And as Ms. Alden referenced, uh, those oftentimes are competitive grants. And as she also mentioned is that many of those grants without a local match, um, it, uh, we have to have local match dollars to be able to capitalize on those grant applications oftentimes. So, uh, whether it's, whether it's roads, whether it's bridges, whether it's Vision Zero, whether it's sidewalks, whether it's, you know, transit, all of those federal funds, um, can actually multiply our efforts if we have a local match to allow us to meet some of our funding needs. Um, it's very clear from what we've heard today that we can't do it alone. Um, and we certainly can't do it with the funding we have now. So, um, looking forward to hearing, um, some of the legal aspects of how do we move forward? And with that, we are looking forward to a presentation from our county attorney's office that will explain to us how we move forward with creating this funding opportunity and giving our citizens an opportunity to help us meet the unfunded needs of, of Hillsborough County as a whole, as well as all of our partners. With that, I'll introduce Sam Hamilton, the Chief Assistant County Attorney. Um, Sam, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everybody. I just wanted to briefly go over a few items. If, uh, at the, the next regular board meeting, March 23rd, if the board's inclined to direct the drafting of an ordinance to provide for the levy of the transportation SRTAX, there are about a half a dozen items you'll, you'll need to consider and provide some direction on, uh, and I'll just quickly go over those. Um, and, and there was also a handout provided, uh, in, in the backup. Um, the first one is the method. Um, there are two ways under state law. Um, it can be done by regular ordinance enacted by the board, or it can be done by charter amendment. The ordinances are very similar, but there are some differences. So we would, we would clearly need a little direction there. Um, in addition, with the regular ordinance, that would take four votes, passage and a charter amendment would take an extra, would take five votes under the county charter, two man charter. Um, the next one is the rate. Um, by statute, it can be up to 1%. Um, the next is the duration. By statute, it can be up to 30 years. Um, state law governs that the tax has to start on a January 1st and has to end on a, on December 31st. But again, you can go up to 30 years. So we would, we would need direction on that as well. Um, then the next one is the actual uses. Um, the ordinance would need to specify how the ordinances have, excuse me, how the uses would be, um, applied. And there's different ways to do that. It could be, the ordinance could be very generic and just refer to the statute with subsequent decisions by the board as to the use. It could be tailored very specifically to particular projects with, you know, for instance, there could be specified percentage splits among different types of projects. Um, that needs to be considered and some direction provided on how to structure that in the ordinance. Um, the next would, would be the actual distribution. Um, the ordinance would need to address how the funds are actually distributed. Um, various ways to do that, there could be specified distribution formula. There could be stated percentages to the various governments. Or it could actually just remain silent and the county commission could later decide how to distribute the funds in accordance with state law. Um, lastly, what type of governance oversight accountability would you like to see in the ordinance? Um, as with the, the, the prior charter amendment, there was, um, a committee that was involved that provided a degree of oversight. So that's when I, when I reference governance and oversight and accountability, that's what I'm referring to. So we would, we would need some direction there as well. Um, that's pretty much it in terms of the contents, what we would need direction on to actually draft. Um, and, and certainly we can answer any questions, you know, with the board discussion. Um, but I'll, I'll turn it back over to the chair at this point.
Thank you, Sam. That was very helpful because we, we clearly on March 23rd, we will, um, discuss how to go about giving you the specs you need, uh, to move us forward on, on the decision to raise revenues for our transportation needs. Um, and so with that, I'd like to open it up to board discussion and remind everyone today is a workshop. Uh, we do not have an in-person forum. Um, we can provide, uh, discussion on what we think, uh, but the decision and the guidance and any recommendations, uh, will be, uh, uh, decided on, uh, at the March 23rd meeting. But it's very important that we have all of our partners available to, uh, give us some input on the, the discussion today and what we've heard today. The first person that I see that has raised their hand is Commissioner White. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a timely meeting. It's no secret.
Uh, it's no secret that there's a potential legislative approach to dealing with the $520 million in funds unlawfully collected during the last referendum. I was one of the stakeholders consulted about a potential compromise among the various interested parties, not the least of which is the taxpayers of Hillsborough County. And I played a role in getting this legislation across the finish line. In fact, I sent a letter to legislative leadership which details my position on the matter. I'm glad to see that the legislature has expressed an interest in helping this county resolve this and has created a potential path to move forward. And I'd like to thank Speaker Sprouse and Senate President Simpson for their efforts in this. I took this action because this has gone on too long and the public deserves a resolution. I realize no one is going to get everything they want, but I wanted to be a catalyst in moving forward. What moving forward looks like is still very much up in the air. Although we've made progress on dealing with the $520 million, we're still far from the finish line. Additionally, we're dealing with 7.9% inflation, gas that's over $4 per gallon, a war going on in Europe, and a stock market that's currently off by double digits. These types of circumstances are often an indication of an impending recession. We cannot ignore this economic backdrop. If we move forward with a referendum, we need to be careful that any plan that moves forward lacks glaring infirmities. The biggest problem with a referendum that was overturned is that it was blatantly unfair to the taxpayers of unincorporated Hillsborough County because it did not overlay what the county's needs. And this bothers me. We should seek a plan that meets the vast and diverse capital improvement needs of this entire county and not one that is based on political ideology. The plan should be data-driven. The old plan was wrong for calling for 45% of revenues to go for Hart and trying to tie the hands of future county commissions with regard to county funding. Moving forward with a new referendum will already be a challenge with the economic backdrop that I described. If we go down the same path as in 2018, we'll create softball opportunities for opposition. And what are some of these opportunities? Well, one, as I mentioned, we still have the $520 million from the last referendum, uh, hanging out there. And the community is going to be much better informed this time. Now I'll say that if each of us were king or queen for the day, we would have seven different views of what's right for this community. I've often put my political ideology aside to reach across the aisle on this board, uh, to work as a team and get good things done for this community. And this is a critical time for us to be a team. If we botch this, we will lose public trust. Here's what I see as a path forward. Less than 45% going to Hart, a shorter duration of the tax levy, and if a shorter duration is not possible, then precluding most of the funding from bonding. And that the funds appropriated to Hillsborough County be unrestricted and without the so-called buckets. I also think that oversight by the duly elected officials at the county and the three municipalities is more than adequate in terms of oversight. If we don't do this, we are all but assuring that this initiative will fail. We need to be honest with the electorate and keep our promises. There are a lot of moving parts to a resolution on the money collected unlawfully, which could assist or detract from the success of a new initiative. How we deal with this as a team is important to the big picture. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Um, the next in the queue to offer some, uh, comments and discussion is Commissioner My- Myers. You're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'd like to thank all our presenters, whatever wealth of information to share with us of the needs and everyone is talking on the same, we all play the same piano of transportation, transportation, transportation needs, uh, in our, in our communities. I also would like to, um, just address having the opportunity to attend the, the town hall meetings and to hear from our constituents of what they were expressing regarding to transportation. And each one attended, they talked about the safety, new roads, sidewalks, sidewalk repairs, road repairs, the same thing that we're talking about today. This was on their mind to bring and to share with us. So I'm so glad we're having this, this workshop because it goes hand in hand of the 250-plus people that attended our town hall meeting. And with that being said, um, as a commissioner for District Three, I intend to bring a commissioner agenda item to the March 23rd meeting that addresses the following. A 1% surtax for 30 years. Two, a hard funding being looked at between 40 to 45%. Three, a slight reduction to the TPO's perspective allocation. Four, that we do not have any restrictions on, uh, the county funds. And five, an ordinance that provides the full flexibility of what is allowed under the Florida statute. Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, you, you're muted. I cannot hear you.
All right. Thank you very much. I said, thank you, Commissioner Myers. I appreciate your comments. I don't see any other hands raised at the moment. Um, Commissioner Cohen, I see you, but I'm not seeing your hand raised. Um, and I, I'd like to also offer, uh, support for what we've heard from Commissioner Myers' perspective. What we've heard in this presentation is that all of, there are methods to plan for transportation. Uh, we have a planning agency that it's done an excellent job of estimating. How do we address the, the growth factors? How do we look at our communities and where those in our community have the greatest opportunity of, uh, benefiting from our, uh, place of unfunded transportation needs? Because if we're able to increase choices, uh, other than having to own a vehicle, uh, in order to have people be able to get to work and go to school and get to the doctors, we're able to help our residents be most successful. We have seen in, in past presentations of the state of our region, in terms of competitiveness, that two key areas, which were described in the city of Tampa's presentation, the correlation between the access to housing and the access to adequate transportation elements, including transit, does actually help the economic success and help our citizens deal with the impact of a recession. It helps, help, uh, helps those individuals maintain their economic, uh, sustainability. It also addresses when we have adequate resources dedicated towards transportation, where we have a transportation network that is not in disrepair, um, and where we have resources dedicated to a transportation strategy. It helps us in maintaining and, um, and competing with other economies. So it supports our economic opportunity. It allows us to invest appropriately. And while we've heard in these presentations, each of our communities, uh, that would be eligible to receive some of these funds as a consequence of the population split, each of these communities have different needs. Clearly Hillsborough, unincorporated Hillsborough County has more roads. That makes sense that we would have a greater need for our asset preservation efforts. But as we heard earlier, a lot of the employees in our areas of employment come from the county and move into our urban cores. And that puts an impact on our overall transportation system that we must plan for in order to be able to stay and remain competitive. By being able to allow individuals to real choices to get around and be successfully economically and investing appropriately from a fair and equitable perspective, we will be able to actually remain our competitive in our area and address the growth that I see, we are experiencing now with somewhere in the range of 100 to 150 people a day moving to Hillsborough County. Um, that may stop if we don't invest in our infrastructure. But I think it's also critically important, what we heard from Ms. Alden, when we're planning for our growth and when we're planning for funding our transportation needs, in order for us to be able to take advantage of the federal funds that are out there, we must have local resources to invest in, in order to be competitive in those grants. So it's, it's important that we address our unfunded needs and provide for our future so that we have a place where our children want to stay and get educated and our workers want to work and be able to get to work, um, and address the fact that we have a large number of people that are coming from our region, our surrounding counties, that are working in the city of Tampa, as well as in, in the Temple Terrace area and our, our per, our core area. So I, I appreciate the presentations today. I appreciate the data that we've gotten today to give us good information on how to make the right decisions for the long term. And I also appreciate seeing the long-term numbers because long-term, uh, transportation funding normally will require bonding in order to be able to do the projects, uh, when they need to be done. Uh, and that's, that's a critical, accessing that capital is critically important to the success of Hillsborough County as a whole. I'll stop there and, um, offer, it looks like Commissioner White, you're back in the queue, or do you have additional comments that you'd like to make?
Yes, ma'am. I did raise my hand again. I just, um, wanted to thank Commissioner Myers for her leadership. Uh, that commissioner item that you're going to be bringing, um, sounds like a real leadership sort of an item. Uh, it sounds as if there's a great deal of compromise in there. Um, it generally sounds, uh, as if it's something that, um, you know, I could, uh, begin to coalesce around with you. Um, when you bring that forward to a, a, a public meeting where we can conduct business and, and take action, I'd sure like to see if I can, um, uh, you know, get you and a couple of other board members to maybe some, consider something in the 35% range to Hart, but, uh, definitely like that as a jumping off point and, uh, really glad to hear that you don't, um, intend to have your item incorporate, uh, those buckets, um, for the, uh, the county funding. I, I think it's important that, um, any funds that Hillsborough County receives, uh, come unrestricted and, and not subjected, uh, to those buckets. And, uh, the same should hold true for our municipalities as well, as well. They'll get their fair share and, uh, you know, they should put those funds, um, to good use, um, uh, in such a way that's in the best interest of their respective cities and in the best interest of their constituents. But, uh, thank you again, Commissioner Myers. Glad to hear that.
Thank you, Commissioner White. I appreciate your comments. Thank you, Commissioner White. I appreciate that. And I would like to, you made reference, uh, to the previous surtax referendum dollars. And I would like to ask our county staff to look, uh, update us on what may have happened, what happened yesterday at the legislature in order to clear up some of the information that, that was presented earlier, that, that, uh, we may have, um, some decisions in the future, or at least some opportunity to address, uh, the previous surtax that was passed in 2018 by our voters by approximately 57%. With that, I'd like to invite, uh, Commissioner Smith. Do you have your hand raised? And then following that will be Commissioner Kemp.
Thank you. And I think the most important thing we have to consider is giving our voters, uh, uh, the referendum that, that they want to pass. We can start with the referendum they already passed. Um, and, and I think that's the perfect jumping off point. Um, but in, in considering what it is that our voters want us to put on the ballot for them to consider, I look to the ELAP referendum, which I was, uh, very much involved with the last time that passed. Uh, and that's come before the voters three different times, and it is the gold standard of voter approval with almost 80% passage last time. And by the way, that was during a very, uh, bad economic time. Um, it was, it was during the, the crash. It was, uh, a terrible time to be asking voters to pass a, a tax, but they did with almost 80, by almost 80% because they had sky-high community confidence in how that money would be spent. Exactly. The public is now very leery of governments appropriating funds that they promised to use in one way and using them another way. The Sodowsky Funds, the Florida Forever Funds come to mind. Um, another thing the ELAP referendum has going for it is so, is besides this, this certainty of how the money will be spent is the Citizen Oversight Committee. Now that is not the Oversight Committee with all the structure and strings that the original referendum had. It's a recommending board, uh, of citizens that just keep an eye on things and bring to the county commission their recommendations. And then it's the county commission who chooses to accept those or not and, and approve them or not. But I'll tell you what, in my, in my experience, the board has always, uh, uh, gone along with it because it's a very, uh, credible citizen oversight process. And, and I think that has always been a, an integral part of the voter confidence in that referendum. The ELAP, uh, referendum is highly restricted in their spending. It is not flexible at, at all. The voters know exactly what they're getting and that's why they vote for it. We don't have the flexibility to spend that money on land acquisition for anything other than conservation and environmental lands within very strict criteria of ranking and prioritizing. Um, there is, uh, i- if in any given year, we wanted to use those mu- that money to buy property to use for a really great project, a new fire station, uh, affordable housing, something wonderful, we still couldn't do it. And the voters are okay with that. The voters are very okay with that and, uh, that money is for that. And so I'm really looking for, uh, that kind of accountability, uh, and, and transparency and certainty when we hand something to the voters. I do not believe that we would have had such a high percentage of the voters approving the last referendum if it was a big fat blank check. I really don't. Um, you, you know, and I think that we need to be very careful in formulating this one to make sure that it's clear what the voters are getting. I went to the, um, uh, open house. I, I looked carefully over the citizen comments from those open houses. I was, I was very impressed that, um, out of all those citizen comment forms, the citizens were asking for the, a broad range of transportation solutions, bike, pedestrian, transit, roads, pothole fixing, um, uh, and, um, light signalization timing. They were very nuanced, they were sophisticated, and they were a broad range. We need, I think, to give the voters something that, um, has something for everyone in the transportation realm. Um, it has bicycle safety, uh, pedestrian safety, has transit, has, so that the voters have the assurance that we're going to do something that takes our county into a future of, uh, of, of, of visionary future of, of new modern transportation, uh, rather than just one thing or the other, or whatever the current board wants to do and the next year, the next board wants to do something else. And political pressures come in when a developer wants a road by their project and, uh, somebody else wants the bus to go by their project. I I think they want this kind of assurance, transparency, and oversight that the previous ordinance had, but of course, in a way that may be a little more creative and bulletproof to lawsuits, certainly. And I have every confidence that our county attorneys can help us do that. So, you know, our needs are so great. We could pass a penny tax and say, we want it all for paving the potholes, and we could spend it paving the potholes over the next 30 years, okay? But I don't think that would pass. You know, I think there's a lot of voters that want a lot of potholes paved, me included, but they need to see, they need to see that we're growing beyond what we've been doing. We can't just be giving them the same old, same old. We can't just be saying, we need more money for more of the status quo because we failed so miserably as a county in the past to manage growth and infrastructure that we got ourselves in a hole, so we need you to bail us out just so we can keep doing the same old, same old. No, no. We need to give them the promise that if they dig deep and support this transportation tax, we are going to really move into a new future of connected transportation, doing the things that the MPO showed that we could achieve, make our cities safer, get people many more job opportunities and get people to work in a safe way. And I'll just close by saying, you know, I disagree that, I think that the MPO showed us once again in their presentation today, a comparison of the two pie charts. The pie chart that divides up the pie according to the last surtax, how many percentages for each of those things, and the pie chart that shows what the MPO, data-driven, public input, years of planning has shown we need, so much percentage for safety, so much percentage for maintaining the system, paving the potholes, so much for transit, so much for road widening. And they're nearly identical. So those buckets, that distribution is based on years of public input, charrette planning, community planning, as well as data-driven. It is data-driven, and that's where those buckets come from, and I think we need to show that we are, you know, that's what we're doing, not some political favor for this area or that area, that we are planning according to that kind of prioritization that the MPO has provided. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
That is a hard statement to follow. I think it was executed with great thought and eloquence about the situation we face. And this, and I think the ELAP comparison was so apt, because I know that, Commissioner Smith, you also know that there were all kinds of predictions that that would fail in Hillsborough County, that it could never pass. And in fact, it wasn't made as strong as it could have been made for that reason. I mean, in actual allocation rather than ability to bond for that. And the support for that, as I remember, and this is just off the top of my head, was something like 73 or 74% with virtually every precinct passing it in Hillsborough County. And people are incredibly proud and incredibly trusting of our ELAP program. You couldn't be more right. And I do not think it was a mistake that the voters made, that they didn't know what they were doing, that it, I think it was a carefully drawn, as you have stated, resolution that was put before the voters in 2018. I do not think it was built on ignorance or misunderstanding and just to, and I thought it was very well presented, actually, by Ms. Alden with the TPO outlining all the different needs. I will agree, we are desperately needy in every area of every transportation need for every place in Hillsborough County. That is, you know, unequivocal, and a lot of the reason is decades of reckless growth, not collecting impact fees, not matching infrastructure, not doing what should have been done, that accounts for a huge part of it. But we've also been, and it was said, the 20, for the public or anyone who may not know, there's a ranking done with MUMA at USF, the Tampa Bay Partnership puts it out, 20 metropolitan areas that we're competitive with or kind of look to them for how we're doing in different facets. And we're 20 every time, year after year, we're number 20 in transit, number 20. And I've said before, we're the most underfunded transit system in the nation, not by a little bit, by a long shot. And for us to think that it's okay, we have 30 routes is what was elucidated, we have 2/3rds of them, 21 of them, that are hourly routes. I mean, I'm the Chair of Hart, I've been very involved. I did not quite realize that that was the case. That is a desperate need and, by the way, in transit operations, there are 70% relying on operating, not capital, operating. And the way that you get funding for legacy, as was pointed out here, is for systems of which we have been desperately short here in Hillsborough County. We do not get the investment that we should have in the state of Florida, but especially not in Hillsborough County in terms of the federal funding, because we have not put forward any commitment, philosophical commitment to doing a great transportation system.
Yeah, you're talking about that.
Yes.
Yes, I turned it off, so I was trying to figure out how to...
Communications, can you help, Mr. Grady?
No.
Oh, I just, okay. So there's a, we have not made the commitment, and to speak of that too, I'll say, for instance, we almost didn't have a ferry system here for six months a year for the last three or four years. That is by a hair that we were able to do that with the region. Because we had that legacy system, because we made an application, we got $4.9 million, you know, almost the cost to pay for a ferry because the county was able to provide as well the $1 million match for that, which are not, there's not resources that Hart has at this time, and I mean for, you know, anything. If we do not start to invest in our transportation system in a way that makes sense, and yes, we got 57% of voters, I agree with you, a jumping off point is the ordinance that was passed in 2018 with 57% of the vote, it was a vision. It was a vision. It wasn't just, you know, throw down the pavement. It was, it outlined, people are extremely interested in trails and in our sidewalks, in our pedestrian facilities, in safety. It enunciated and put out those kinds of things. It made a reasonable, a reasonable allocation to Hart, a reasonable allocation, not a extraordinary allocation by any means, especially when we're so, so underfunded. And, you know, it will be, what we can do with that allocation will be to build a, I think, a good transit system. It won't be some extraordinary, we won't be, you know, riding along in coach buses, that, it won't be the most, and I have every faith that Ms. Legrand and Hart will be spending that money well, should it come to us. But I would just be, I would say that the voters were there and they supported a vision, and, you know, I think, as you do, Commissioner Smith, you just put this out kind of like, you know, what has somewhat been put forth. I just don't think that there will be the support for it in the community, and I think it's short-sighted. I know everybody looks at their own needs that they want instead of the whole vision, the whole picture, and, you know, we have to get all of those parties to support this if we're going to move forward and get the support that we need to pass this and help all parts, where all parts of Hillsborough County and all needs of transportation are being met in a coherent way with a vision of connectivity, with a vision of trip capture when we do our land use, with a vision to really make this transformative.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. I don't see anyone else in the queue at the moment, but I did want to agree with both of you, actually all three of you, with Commissioner Myers, Smith, and Kemp on the commitment we should have towards a transparent transit, transportation plan. It is very, very clear that even for those that opposed the previous surtax, that what the voters want is transparency and commitment to serving all of us in Hillsborough County. And each, as I said earlier, each area has a different set of needs, but transportation planning and transportation funding is a complex of various different elements. Are we going to say, well, we're going to do potholes and no sidewalks? I'm sure there's a bunch of voters that voted for this where the only thing that was important to them was that we create connectivity and make sure that our children have the ability to get to school without walking down the middle of the road, that we actually have sidewalks in our communities. We have individuals in our community that are reliant on being able to have their lives worked because they are transit-dependent. And then we have those that would prefer to use transit, especially when gas gets to $5 a gallon. We have historically seen that our transit service ridership has increased significantly during periods of recession where household budgets are squeezed and during periods of high gas prices. And so that would actually indicate that it would be wise to look at all elements of a transportation strategy to be able to adequately serve all of the communities within Hillsborough County, because all of the communities of Hillsborough County would be paying this tax. So I think it's incumbent and responsible to show how we would actually meet our transportation plans, how, what strategies we would use, use historical proven methods for planning out our transportation plans, and capitalizing on not only state but federal dollars that are now available to invest in our infrastructure that was not available in 2018. So I think it's critically important that we look at that and offer an opportunity for us to compete for those dollars and bring those dollars to Hillsborough County residents in the way of investing responsibly in our infrastructure. With that, I'd like to find out if any of our county staff, whether it be our legislative team or county attorney, that could give us some guidance on what we learned about the legislature's desire to address the previous surtax dollars that were collected for only three years, or almost three years, and that generated over $500 million. Is there someone on staff that could assist us with just a brief presentation on where that sits for what we understand today? Ms. Wise, do you have some recommendation on who might be able to answer that question?
Well, I see Jim Taylor came on, but I was thinking that it may be definitely Christine, if Christine can chime in as well.
Okay.
That would probably be helpful, because I think there's some legal nuances.
There's some nuances that do need to be addressed, but Mr. Taylor, can you advise us what happened yesterday that is relevant to this conversation?
Sure, and I'll try to give as much perspective from our team's view, and it should be noted, our team, we did not have anything to do with this proviso language. When it was negotiated and adopted at the last step of the budget conference, we were made aware of it at the same time as the public. So, you know, per our email that we sent out to the full board, we were trying to understand the implications of the proviso, understanding the nuances of the process, and try to understand that this money will be spent and used within the four corners of Hillsborough County. So that's the extent from our team of our involvement, which was, we didn't have any, and then again, trying to understand as best as we can within the short 24-hour heads-up that we had prior to this budget workshop, the implications of the language.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor, for keeping us informed. That's great, and all the board members have received that correspondence. Ms. Beck, would you like to help understand what we do know so far?
Yes, Madam Chair. I also just received this last night, but the, I think the, maybe the key language is that it states that the funds would be used pursuant to 212055, which is the statute we have been discussing, which is for transportation purposes. And it also has a provision whereby it would work hand-in-hand with the court, that court case that is currently pending, so that that case would have to reach a final judgment. And so there's some contingencies in there, but the, again, there's significant language that leads the funds to be used pursuant to 212055 and is for the benefit of Hillsborough County, at least as it is written now.
Okay, and could you explain the 255? Because for those of us that aren't attorneys and read the statutes every day, and those of the public that may be watching, it would be helpful to understand that part of the statute in brief description.
Yes, absolutely. So Florida statute 212.055 is the statute which sets forth all of the ways in Florida to do a sales surtax. The first one that is addressed in that statute is for transportation, but it actually has other sections that would cover, for example, our indigent health surtax or various other ones, but the focus here is on transportation, and so presumably that is the reference. And in that section of 212055 that talks about the ability to do a transportation sale surtax, it enumerates all, in great detail, all of the ways that the funds can be legally spent. So when I say that it references that, it would mean that it is, as long as it's consistent with those provisions, that it can be used for the transportation needs within our county. And the other point that should be made probably is that, you know, in a manner deemed appropriate by this county commission.
Right. And that's where apparently the importance of the Beawarta County Commission, bringing this referendum forward, this new referendum to replace the income stream that was voted on by the voters, that we don't have access to, and this might make that available or some portion of it available in the future. But again, that depends on how we invest in the future and giving the citizens an opportunity to make sure that we, as the elected officials, are allocating and investing accordingly. So I'm... So I'm looking forward to March 23rd. And I'd like to recognize Mr. Taylor, who's got his hand raised, to offer us some more guidance.
I'll just add one final bit of context as to this proviso language that was adopted in the final step last night with budget conference. The budget is complete. It has been set on the state lawmakers' test. So we're now in that 72-hour cooling off period, so that proviso language essentially is codified and is in there. I just didn't want anyone to think that there was still some wiggle room or some time. So in fact, and that actually happened while this workshop was going on. So I just wanted to let you all know.
Right on the ready, keeping us informed. Thank you very, very much. We benefit from your paying attention to that while we're just taking care of our knitting. So thank you very, very much. I appreciate it. I don't see any other hands raised. And I wanted to offer Ms. Wise an opportunity to wrap up with any of her comments before we adjourn.
Thank you. And I want to thank you all. It's been a journey going through all of this. And a big thanks to all of our partners here today. I think it was a good opportunity for you to hear, not only from the county, which you've heard often, but to hear from the partners, because this is a big county. And what goes on in our municipalities at the TPO are critical elements of the entire transportation network. And so a big thanks to everybody.
Right. And as, yeah, and as you said earlier, or as we've all said, you know, if, when the board brings forward a financial plan or a strategy for funding our unfunded transportation needs, it will take care of all of Hillsborough County and will be spent on all of Hillsborough County, including, you know, our unincorporated folks and all of our cities, and to make sure that we have resources for doing good planning, to make sure that we're addressing each other's needs. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting. If the board, if the board members could stick around for a second, I just need to ask you a couple of questions. It's unrelated to the workshop. But thank you very much. The meeting adjourned.
Ms. Beck? Ms. Beck?
Yes, yes, sir.
Is that a good idea for the board members to speak after adjournment?
I'm just asking if you're going to be, if we're going to have a quorum for the public hearing this evening, and is he going to take a roll call here?
I've decided...
I'm sorry, you can probably ask the county administrator to do that and report back to you, and then we won't have any concern whatsoever, so.
Fine.
And Bonnie, I'll tell you, I'm going to go. I was kicking around the idea of trying to do it virtually, but I'm going to be there in person.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner White. I appreciate that because I was running a little scared there because we did not have a quorum as of a couple of hours ago. So I truly appreciate that. Thank you so much.
I'm planning to be there.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Owen was saying something, but he was unmuted.
I'll be here also.
That's the only thing I wanted to do is, what's our roll call for tonight?
I count three, so, car.
And I'll be there. So I think we're, yeah, so I'll be there.
Everybody else would be icing on the cake. Wonderful.
Excellent. Thank you so much, everyone. Thanks for today.
Wait, can I be the icing on the cake?
Oh, sure. Yeah, absolutely.
Bye.
Take care.